Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Can I have your attention? Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to our regular call board meeting September 21st, 2023 at 6:00 PM at the Estill County Board of Education boardroom. And I would like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone, and at this time, we would like to stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for that. Um, I'd like to remind everyone, if you'd like to sign in, there's a sign-in sheet as you come into the boardroom. Mr. Brock, do we have any revisions to this agenda?
Uh, we have one revision down in Actional Items B, subsection 1. Consideration for FCCLA to meet, go to the meeting in Washington DC. Had communication from them today, they are not going to go on that trip, but they would also, but they would still like to be considered for the trip to Birmingham. So, we need to remove that item from the agenda.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, first on our agenda, we have our recognitions, and we have South Urban Early Learning Center. They are here to do a presentation for us, so come forward.
Tony, Karen Hall is back there. She is right there.
Okay.
How are you all?
All right, this is just a few of our preschool children. We have 147 of these, and we have 16 early head start children. So, we thought we would do just a little bit of what we do at school. We always start by saying the pledge. So, if you don't care to, for us to do the pledge again, we're gonna do it preschool style. So, they repeat after me. So, boys and girls, we're gonna turn, well, actually, you just look at me this time, okay? We say the pledge just like we do every day. We look at the flag, but it's behind you. In our hands are our marks. Hey, you say what I say. I pledge allegiance
I pledge allegiance
to the flag
to the flag
of the United States of America
of the United States of America
and to the republic
and to the republic
for which it stands
for which it stands
one nation
one nation
under God
under God
indivisible
indivisible
with liberty
with liberty
and justice
and justice
for all
for all.
They, by the end of the year, they'll say it with, not that. Um, so this is, I think we kind of twenty-three days in preschool, but what this is. Okay, they say something with me, we call it our three P's. This is really important in preschool, so, ready, boys and girls? All right, we're gonna look at the train poster that's normally in your classroom, and you say what I say. Today, I will be kind to my friends and my teachers. I will be responsible with my things. And I will be safe everywhere I go. And then every day, we also sing and dance, so that's what we're gonna do for you. We're gonna do something called the Tootie Talk. If you know it, you're welcome to do it with us. If you have bigger kids that wanna do it, or grownups.
It's my favorite dance. Ms. Jessica taught it to me.
I'm afraid that you won't be able to stand on this and do it, so step down on your knees, you might fall off.
They're all adorable. Miss Hall, do you want, you want the Mac to put in front of you?
Hey, everybody, let's do the Tootie Talk. A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta. A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta. Thumbs up, hands up. A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta. A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta. Thumbs up
thumbs up
elbows back
elbows back
A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta. A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta. Thumbs up
thumbs up
elbows back
elbows back
feet apart
feet apart
A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta. A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta. Thumbs up
thumbs up
elbows back
elbows back
feet apart
feet apart
knees together
knees together
A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta. A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta. Thumbs up
thumbs up
elbows back
elbows back
feet apart
feet apart
knees together
knees together
bottoms up
bottoms up
A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta. A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta. Thumbs up
thumbs up
elbows back
elbows back
feet apart
feet apart
knees together
knees together
bottoms up
bottoms up
toes out A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta. A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta. Thumbs up
thumbs up
elbows back
elbows back
feet apart
feet apart
knees together
knees together
bottoms up
bottoms up
toes out
toes out
eyes shut
eyes shut
A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta. A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta. Thumbs up
thumbs up
elbows back
elbows back
feet apart
feet apart
knees together
knees together
bottoms up
bottoms up
toes out
toes out
eyes shut
eyes shut
turn around
turn around
A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta. A tootie ta, a tootie ta, a tootie ta ta.
That never need to be plugged in. The onboard system charges the battery for you, starting.
All right, boys and girls, you're gonna sit right where you are, so sit. Sit right where you are, so you can see me. We're gonna look at We put a video together today of, you know, what happened today. So, it's life in preschool on day 23.
Your mouth okay? Put your pink, your fingers right here on the side, and pull it apart. And push it back all the way, and see if you can get your fingers.
Sure, we have our bubbles and bunny tails, friends. To be safe, be kind, and be responsible in our hallway.
You can let us know how you're feeling this morning. You're in the green zone? What's the green zone name, Maddie? Happy, I'm glad you're happy this morning. And a snack for later. And he'll need a notebook and some pencils. All right, lick your hands. You need to lick your hands first. What's your story gonna be about? It's gonna be about escaping, finding, where your mother's still reading the app. This is the remaining preschool.
It is fabulous. Okay, um, ladies and gentlemen, next on our agenda, we have our facilities and construction update, and first on our list is our Estill Springs Elementary School. I think that's Mr. Kenny.
It is.
Yep.
So, um, this week, we had Rising Sun over there reshaping, uh, the dirtwork of Soundedale there that needs to be, uh, uh, gonna have to be reworked. We added some stone down the driveway there to help with the water that was jumping in the dirt. Uh, that's drove by there, so, I talked to Rising Sun this week, or this morning, actually. And the game plan is they'll have the trees replaced next week, and then we're gonna hydroseed again next week. We're hoping that we get a little rain beforehand, because it's so dry right now, that, uh, once we do hydroseed.
And with the temperature starting to, you know, cool off, it's gonna, it should jump pretty well. Uh, it obviously didn't take the last time, and, uh, so they're, they're willing to go back and do that for us, um, like I said, next week. So, that will pretty much wrap up, when we get seed down and get the, uh, the trees replaced, that'll pretty much wrap up the punch list at Estill Springs.
The part up front there that wasn't, are they gonna hydroseed that too?
The whole, they're gonna hydroseed the whole entire, anything that's not solid will be hydroseeded again.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Because I knew it was still pretty bad.
Yeah, it, it all died out, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So, um, first on our agenda, we have consideration for approval of some change orders. Um, 3-1, 3-4-1, 12-4-1.
All these are, are the, uh, the direct purchase orders that had a balance on them, and that money comes back to the board. So, it is.
All right, so I need a motion to approve, um, the following change orders as discussed. Ms. Sheila Samples makes a motion, do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second, do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. Next, we have, um, change order 3-1-1 for the Lee Building Products.
That's the same thing.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You listed them all separate, I'm sorry. Okay, so moving along, we have our ADA upgrades project, which is BG 23-087.
So, Jarboe has been working on correcting, uh, latches at the South Urban building and, um, a couple or a few of the doors of the middle school. I believe they've done most of the corrections at South Urban, minus, I believe, one door that they have to figure out, um, how they wanna get keyed, or at least have a, a keen kind of clarification on it. Um, but it's my understanding that's being worked out with Principal and maybe Mr. Willis. Um, but for the middle school, they have addressed most of the doors. I do think there's maybe still a handful that they have to address, uh, but they've provided all of the required closeout documents, record drawings, so on. So, um, we do believe that the final pay-up and the BG four are fair and ready to be executed if the board finds it acceptable.
Mr. Brock, do you have anything further with that?
I just, I know, I saw your email this week, we've got a few, I know one of them was one of the striker plates and, and different things like that, and there's still a few little things at the high school as well, I know that's like past, but can you keep us, bring us up to date on that?
Yeah, so, um, as far as the, the recent ones that you are aware of from Jarboe, I believe Jarboe has a plan to get, if not all of them, most of them addressed at the middle school and South Urban in the next week. When it comes to the unrelated high school kind of conversation, um, I've shared a markup with, uh, Kenny and Rising Sun, to make sure that they understand, uh, the whole comprehensive list of issues that are happening at the high school, so there's no, uh, I guess, going back and forth about, oh, we thought it was this versus that.
Yeah.
So, we do have that shared, and I believe Rising Sun is, is reviewing it and making sure that they're clear with Schiller. Uh, all to say, there's not a resolution on the high school items, but there is a plan of action that Jarboe has for the safety ADA hardware questions that are happening.
Okay. If, if I understand it correctly, there was a mechanism actually in the lock itself that was breaking, is that correct?
Yeah, so I can, I can share a little bit insight into the high school. So, I did speak with Donnie Napier today with Rising Sun, and, uh, so I think your fall break is October 15th. I think, I think that's correct, it's October 10th. So, they'll be back on site with Schiller to look at all these issues that we're having. Um, the, uh, so originally, the, the issue's kind of related more to the existing high school that had, using the old doors, new hardware, and that caused this whole set of issues. I think what you're referencing, Mr. Brock, is at the field house, there was a door that was, uh, a piece of hardware that was damaged on the interior part of Schiller. So, that's, that's not necessarily on Rising Sun, it's on, it's on the supplier, the manufacturer. So, we're gonna bring those back, those guys back down here on, um, like I said, the 15th of the month, and, uh, we'll also have the, uh, the door hardware inspector with us as well to, to do a whole, you know, I guess a final back punch of what the issues might be.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, next on our agenda, we have consideration for approval of the deductive DPO change orders for Contractors Choice and Davis Elliott to reconcile the final DPO amounts for the Estill County Safety and ADA Upgrades, which is project BG 23-087.
So, in fact, I can just clarify those. Those are similar to the Estill Springs purchase orders, those are the remaining balance that were left on those, uh, amounts, so I think it's, uh, about $3,900 or, I don't wanna say, uh, Contractors Choice, no, I'm sorry, that's Davis Elliott. Contractors Choice is a credit back of about $1,400. So, all to say, it's the remaining balance to give back to the district.
Okay. So, that's the two change orders that are listed below there. Change order CO 2253-01-03 and 2253-03-01. So, I need a motion to move forward with approval of those change orders. Sheila Samples makes a motion, Tammy Hardy makes a second, do we have any discussion?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to call for a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. Next, we have consideration for approval of BG four for the Estill County Safety and ADA Upgrades Project, which is BG 23-087.
And I, I don't have any further comments on that unless you have questions about.
No, they've already addressed that.
Okay, so we need a motion, um, to approve that? Do we have a motion? Ryan Kobe makes a motion, Sheila Samples makes a second, do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. Uh, next, we have the final pay application number five with associated DPO invoicing for the Estill County Safety and ADA Upgrade Projects, which is BG 23-087. Any further comments?
Uh, I just wanna point out that that would basically release the remaining retainage on Jarboe's contract of about $14,000, and then it also has a smaller invoice for Contractors Choice of $488. So, all to say, it's still DPO of a small amount, but most of it is to release the rest of the, the retainage for Jarboe.
Yeah, and as long as they continue to work with us to solve those issues, I don't see a problem with it.
Contractually, um, Jarboe is obligated to correct anything that happens in the next year, um, so they're not, like, out of the loop for sure.
I think that's what we had discussed, is we wanted to make sure that it's still gonna be taken care of.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so, I need a motion to approve that final pay-up. Tammy Hardy makes a motion, do I have a second? Carrie Smallwood makes a second, all in, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. Do you have anything further for us, Kenny, or?
I do, I do not.
Okay.
Um, and this could be something later on the agenda, but, um, Mr. Brock, I will send you the markup that I sent to Kenny, so you have a, a clear understanding of what is being coordinated with Rising Sun on the high school items. And then, just let me know if I have to do anything for the middle school, uh, for, for what we talked about with, uh, the structural items there.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Have a good one. Kenny jumped up like a dragonfly.
Just thought we might be at home for supper.
He's ready to roll. Thank you. Um, so that brings us down to our action items. Mr. Brock, do you want to discuss any of those?
So, the, uh, yesterday, the Central Kentucky Educational Co-op, uh, met, and they voted to receive our district as a full member. This goes back to the savings that we get through food services and the contracts that they get in the morning of day, so it's my recommendation, we approve that.
Okay. So, I need a motion to approve, uh, the resolution agreement to Kentucky, Central Kentucky Educational Cooperative. Sheila Samples makes a motion, do I have a second? Ryan Kobe makes a second, do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. Um, next on our agenda, we have consideration or approval for the following out-of-state trips. Um, I think the one has been canceled, and the other one is the FCCLA National Fall Meeting in Birmingham, Alabama, which is November 9th through the 12th. Do you have any comment?
It's out of state and, and overnight, so the board has to approve it, but they're funding the trip fully, so.
Oh, they are.
Yep.
How many kids are going on it?
Uh, I don't know exactly how many are going on that, but I can find out and let you know. I've gotta do an email somewhere, and I can't remember exactly.
Okay, so, um, I need a motion, um, to approve the FCCLA National Fall Meet in Birmingham, Alabama, for them to travel out of state. Sheila Samples makes a motion, do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second, do we have any discussion? And they're funding the trip themselves, so.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to call for a vote at this time, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. Next on our agenda is consideration for approval of an increased credit card balance.
So, that comes from, I know you all have experienced it as well, sometimes when, specifically with travel, with, uh, some of the district credit cards, those limits get reached, and then there's some problems while on travel. This would just increase the, uh, limit for each card, $5,000, to kinda take care of that problem that we've had. Uh, we don't carry a balance on those, we pay those off, so it's just, just for some of them issues to take care of, that we ran into when, when we have larger groups that are traveling.
Okay, I need a motion to approve for an increase on the credit cards. Ryan Kobe makes a motion, do we have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second? Any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. Next, we have, uh, consideration for approval of our FY '24 working budget.
So, you have in front of you a printout of the fiscal year '24 working budget. Uh, it's just a continuation of, of what would've been looked at last year when you all, uh, looked at the budget preliminary. Angie and I have been working on it. The, the biggest difference is we're gonna Angie and I have been working on it. The, the biggest difference is we're gonna have is there's, there's some ESER III funding that we found a way that we can move around and it benefits the district a little bit better. From, at the beginning, around July, our AFR, we had $1.6 million carry forward or contingency in Fund One. You can look through it there and I think she's given you a sheet that actually tells you what each category is. But the main thing is just moving around some of those ESER dollars and then we budgeted out for each one of the departments. And we're looking for them to code them and get back and we'll have that in munis. Her and I are gonna get together and then we've got a meeting we actually have to go to, to start looking at planning next year budget as well. And we can come back in October and update you on this one as well.
I need to call for approval for FY '24 Working Budget. You all have had an opportunity to view this. I need a motion to approve. Ryan Kobe makes a motion. Do I have a second? Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 5-0 vote. Next, we have consideration for approval to amend the salary schedule for substitute teacher pay. Mr. Brock?
So, we obviously have a hard time finding subs. And, and so we have a lot of teachers covering different classes. And so I talked to Andrea and I'm like, we've got to figure out what we can do about this, at least to help. And so I talked to a few other people and just came up with this idea based on what Fayette pays. Because we have a lot of people that go to Fayette and they pay $175 for retired teachers. Well, I didn't want to pay $175, but I said, if we bumped ours 15 and got it to 150 and then went down the line and bumped each one of them up a little bit, let's reach out to those people who are leaving us and going to Fayette and see if they'll come back to us. And overwhelmingly, they said, yes, if you can bump it $15, we'll stop going there and we'll come back to you all. So it will provide us more subs at a minimal cost to the district and help relieve some of the pressure on our teachers that are have to cover classes every day. So it's my recommendation, we approve this.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the amended salary schedule for substitute teacher pay. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 5-0 vote. Next on our agenda, we have consideration for approval of a position for additional instructional coach. Mr. Brock?
So with academic work that we're doing this year and our focus on academics, we have all of our coaches back in schools. And we have one at the high school, one at the middle school, but currently we're split, one between the two elementary schools. So I met with Angie and we looked at the ESER funding we have for the remaining of this year and for next year, ESER II and III, and figured out a way to move some of those around and be able to fund this position out of ESER III for the next two years. My suggestion would be at the end of that, we look at it and see if the, the money that's been spent out of ESER, if it's justified by the growth, I think it will be with the work we're doing with our coaches, then we can make a decision whether to keep it or whether to, to remove it from, from our salary schedule. But that's the reason for the position, so that each school has their own coach to work with teachers and work with principals and PLCs to move the academic work and the coaching work with teachers and with principals that we've started forward. And I'll say this, and the principals can comment on this later, it has been received very well by our building principals and our teachers and our staff to have coaches working with them. Our coaches are doing a phenomenal job working with them.
Can I say what? One of my teachers just said to me.
Yes.
And me, this hasn't heard this, because this is how you start this, you're not getting a little scared about that.
Not at all.
But indeed, now, one of my teachers just said, they were telling me, because we were talking about maybe bridging the gap between our building and the central office and that's on that day, and they were saying, make sure that people at central office know that putting an instructional coach from central office in our building is the best move central office has made for a very long time. That was a good move. They're very well received.
Glad to hear that. Thank you.
So I need a motion to approve a position for an additional instructional coach. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 5-0 vote. There you go.
Excellent.
So next, we have our consent items. Mr. Brock, would you like to discuss any of those?
They're just standard amendments from the August meeting, the treasurer's report, paying the bills. The MOAs, the Gear Up MOA, they had not updated it. It still had Mr. Sailor's name on it. This is an updated copy with, with my name on it. Not that my name matters, but for it to be official, the right people's names need to be on it. We need to be approving the right MOA. So there's that. Data Scene is, we participate with them. They provide us MacBooks, I believe it is, and it's at the elementary schools. Do I? IMAX, sorry. And the students can use them during the day. We leave them on in the evening and then there's some research done on them at night. So I recommend that we improve all consent items.
I need a motion to approve all of the consent items as discussed. Mr. Brock? Ryan Kobe makes a motion. Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 5-0 vote. That brings us down to our superintendent's report. Mr. Brock?
Okay, so we'll just hit some highlights and then I've got somebody here with us tonight that we'll give a minute to, to talk. So one thing is that's, that's happened since last board meeting is Mr. Willis's duties have changed somewhat. With everything happening with the foundation and our athletics program growing, I, I saw the need to take Mr. Moore and put him full-time AD. The two jobs and the split between the two jobs was just a bit of a overload. And, and I think the board knew that that was eventually gonna happen. So I've asked him to move into the full-time AD position. We'll have to look at some things upcoming with that. And Mr. Willis is gonna take over being in charge of the Success Academy. I don't believe in asking somebody to do something else without taking something off of their plate. So when I talk to him about it, I will be taking maintenance, food services and health services. So they will no longer have to, he'll no longer deal with them, they'll deal directly with me. He still has a hand in facilities with some of the stuff and with transportation, but that change has been made. It's just kind of a restructuring. It's not a, it's really more duties than it is anything else. The coaching conversations and principals, like I said, can talk about some of this here a little bit and I've already alluded to it some, that's happening in our PLCs and our buildings and between our principals and our teachers and between our teaching and learning team. Coaches and principals and teachers have been received very well from what I can tell in being in buildings. I think that we've got a really good positive attitude and we're moving in the right direction. We still have a lot of work to do and it's kind of the, the old adage, like when you start the work, you start to figure out how big the work is. And I think people are starting to realize that, but I'm, I'm happy that they're excited about the work. We've had some, some tough meetings and tough conversations, but I'll brag on our staff in this. After those meetings, they've came back and they've said, okay, what do we do? How do we, how do we make things better for our kids? And they work so hard and we wanna, we wanna acknowledge them for that and they're continuing to work hard in this new focus on standards and academics. So that's going really well. I haven't got to be in buildings the way I wanted to this week. I was in West Urban earlier this week and then just have kind of got eaten by a few little things, but tomorrow I've kind of wiped my calendar. So y'all expect to see me tomorrow in your buildings and in your classrooms. I enjoy doing that because that's what it's about. It's about the kids and we've got to be where they are. Mr. Cornett has hit the ground running. He's been a very valuable asset to our district with some of that academic focus and coaching, especially with our teaching and learning team. Our coaches have completed their training for their non-traditional coaching cycles. That concluded Wednesday. Was it this Wednesday or last Wednesday? It was this, last Wednesday, a week ago. And that model fits in exactly with the kind of coaching conversations that he and I both are, are working with principals and with our coaches to have with, with teachers. Attendance in ADA is back up. It's around 92. It's actually 91.75. So seems like, knock on wood, we're kind of on the mend and our attendance is getting back the way that, that it needs to go. Update on our middle school and Mr. Wesley can talk about this a little bit more here in a minute too. Update on our middle school, I had a walkthrough with two officials from KDE. And also, we had a walkthrough with Ross Tarrant to try to update our facility's K-Fix report at KDE. And so they just uploaded a bunch of documents today and there was a mistake in the report. It had our building a year newer than what it actually is, so that changed some things. And I can send you all the full report. We can go over it. But there was a lot of difference in where it actually is versus where it was at on that K-Fix list at KDE. So hopefully we can get that built up. Still working with Mr. Wesley and some of our other, Mr. Codell, Ross Tarrant, to try to find some funding to help us with middle school situation. And I've also been working with Mr. Wesley for some other opportunities for kids. I know I've said before and I continue to say, it's all about what we can provide for our kids. He's brought to us some exciting opportunities with EKU and some other partners potentially. He thinks really, really big, so he's got some things coming in that I want, want him to share with you tonight as well. Some good opportunities, like I said, for our kids and specifically with aviation and EKU, and he'll talk a little bit more about that. And we've got a simulator that's coming in to gauge some interest, but there's some potential there moving forward that could be, be a great opportunity. So, Mr. Wesley, I appreciate you coming tonight. If you want to share, I know you've got some things other than that, but I just kind of wanted to set the stage a little bit.
Thank you so much for having me tonight. I, I have some letters I'm gonna be passing out to you. On the back is what I wrote Commissioner Glass on behalf of Estill County in the middle school and on the front is the response. I apologize for not being able to make the KDE tour, which I did take two or three tours through the school. So we're, we're well aware of what's going on. But this is just, you know, something I wanted to share with you guys for what, what I've been doing behind the scenes.
Thank you, Senator.
We met today.
He gave me one, so I have it.
We, we met today with our budget committee for Wolf County, who are trying to put a full-time school in over there. That's gonna be really good. That's gonna be through ACTC. And I would love for you guys to meet Jennifer Linden. She's had, she has seven campuses that she is over. She's worked really good with us and our kids from eastern Kentucky and a lot of scholarships. So we're gonna be setting up a, maybe a meeting pretty soon. We can invite you to Frankfort, sit in with us with Mr. Codell on the budget, what we're gonna need for our middle school. Does anybody have any questions about that?
And I'll say this, I mean, we, we're aware that it's a problem and everybody knows what happened with it being built on pyridic shell. We again did have a structural engineer come in at the beginning of the year and say that it's structurally sound. We are continuing to monitor that. The urgency is the movement in the building and I think everybody realizes that. We wouldn't have put kids in a building that wasn't currently safe, but we can't say what a year from now or three years from now, that's why we're monitoring. But I appreciate all your help with that.
So we're, we're gonna work with Mr. Codell and, and our budget committee. Also Representative Smith, he's gonna be helping on, on this project. Like I said, we, we met with Jennifer Linden today for the Hope Mining Project. We got one on Wolf County. We got a lot of good things that we're trying to push for our schools. And I just wanted to come and really introduce myself and tell you what I'm doing for you guys behind the scenes up in Frankfort. Several months ago, I worked with Colonel Wicker having the Blackhawk helicopter land here in Estill County, not to mention Madison and Oberon Powell. So what we're gonna try to do is do a civic leader flight for October 27th is what I'm gonna shoot for. At least a 30-day plan going out. That way we can take every teacher, if, if you're not afraid of heights, take in a Blackhawk. How many would like to ride a Blackhawk? So I'm gonna try to get them to jar you if, if we can get this going. We'll take the board members and Mr. Brock, his boots on, we'll, we'll go up in a Blackhawk. I think it'd be really good. I'm trying to tease you guys with an aviation program I want to bring here to Estill County. The simulator is gonna cost $6,500. I've been working with EKU. I've met with them about a week and a half ago with President McFadden. He's on board for Estill County, what we're wanting to do for the ATC. So what this is gonna do, this is gonna be a simulator airplane. It's not gonna have the wings or nothing, but it's gonna be a simulator for these kids to be able to spark an interest, see, to report to you guys what it would bring to Estill County if you guys approve this. So, just say a mechanic. If we can get a mechanic program going, these kids are looking at six figures as soon as they get out of high school. And so we got a mechanic up on 213. He said he's willing to come and teach the kids. So that's, that's one option that we could do for the, just for the aviation. The simulator is gonna basically be a tease to get these kids interested, to show the teachers what, what we would do. So you're not gonna need, need much room. We're not gonna put an airplane inside of a, a room, okay? I could have the commissioner of aviation come and give you guys a report. We can give you guys a new air wing. It's like a, just a huge building to store airplanes in. What this is gonna do, this is gonna bring a perspective for these students. We can bring a simulator airplane in that doesn't run and let them be taught how to break that down, how to work on it, just like they do a diesel mechanic or a diesel truck. So anyways, there were some of the options we could do. That will be free. We can build that on, on y'all's campus for free. It'll be explained by the commissioner if you guys would want to talk to him. But October 27th, if I can get you guys to vote on that, take you guys up. The reason I'm pressing you guys is we're gonna need a 30-day request for the National Guard before it gets too cold. I think it's pretty cool with the fall colors. It'll be a good time. It'll be on a Friday, 27th. So, but anyways, that, that's one of the things. We're gonna try to hit up some donors here in Estill County. It's gonna cost $6,500. And what, what that's gonna do is EKU is gonna provide the trainers. It's gonna come in and train one teacher or two teachers, however many you need. They might, you know, just for example, maybe a PE or a gym teacher. They, they'll have a little bit more time than an English teacher. And so if we can train them to train these kids at least once or twice a day, if you can have a couple of classes, I don't know how many kids are gonna be interested. I, I'm pretty sure that there's gonna be a lot. But anyways, we, we, we worked with Colonel Wicker about getting the Blackhawk in over here. The kids like flying. I heard a lot of response from the adults, what about us? So here it is. I'm bringing the Blackhawk to you. Hopefully we can get you guys up in there if you guys would approve that. And Tammy said that she would like to go. But anyways, so if we can get the donors of Estill County, some businesses that would, would be interested in getting the simulator come. This is what EKU is gonna require, $6,500 to bring that simulator in. They're gonna build it, they're gonna construct it. And then they're gonna have some people there to teach one of your teachers to train these kids. So that would be good for you guys. I think that would, I don't think we can get a simulator anywhere. But we could fit that in one of ATC classes or I'm sure that we could find a place to put it. Any questions on that?
We've got a preliminary plan to get kids exposed to it. If it's something that you can get here.
We, we're gonna get it here. How many would like to see that? Amen. I, I would too. Also, I would like to take some tours of, like there's some colleges that's reached out to me, WKU, EKU and Alice Lloyd. I want every kid to have an opportunity for, if, if they want to further themselves. When I was in school, my fear was I didn't have enough money or my parents couldn't afford it. So I was gonna have to go in the military if I wanted to go to college. And so with some of these colleges, they're, they're wanting to reach out to us and bring these kids for free. So I've visited a lot of these, of these colleges. Just was over Alice Lloyd a couple of weeks ago. EKU about a week and a half ago. So I, I'm just glad that there are some colleges here close by that, that want to reach out for us. So I'm just glad that there are some colleges here close by that want to reach out for us. Hopefully we can get Bobby Shored up in the air. Not only that, but we can get him to help us with some people in that's local, that jump on board, business-wise, that contribute to Estill County.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Anything else?
Well, that is right now. I can bring the Commissioner in, if you guys would want, Commissioner of Aviation, and he can give you an update on all the hangers of what we can provide for you if you guys didn't want to do the program for aviation. I mean, and this is another thing, this is just an idea, I talked to Mr. Brock about this. If you guys could give me about 10 acres, just square off about 10 acres, we can do a heavy equipment operator school here. I talked to Hinkle, they are willing to give us and donate us some equipment for these kids during a certain season, like spring and summer, maybe some fall, I don't know. That way, they'll have a job, as soon as they get graduated, they can have a good job to go to. So not every kid is going to want to go to college, we understand that. So we're going to try to provide different opportunities for all these kids. All right, that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? All right, well, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Wesley. Those are exciting things and wonderful opportunities for our kids. We appreciate your work locally and in Frankfort. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking for another session?
Okay, so, we have our principals.
Yep.
Do we have any principals that would like to give an update or a report on things that are going on at your school and within your building? Ms. Napier, would you like to go first?
I'd first, sir.
Do you have a microphone?
Do I need a microphone?
Maybe not for us, but maybe for, maybe for the audience.
No, I did.
Sorry, I keep on clearing my throat, it does not go away.
Oh, yeah, I know. Even though I never officially had it.
You had it. I betcha.
I tested it every night.
Hannah, did you change the channel?
Am I good?
Once again, we're delayed by Mr. Simpson.
Hey, hey, we're saved by Mr. Simpson. Now, if you look on the screen, I didn't print anything out, but I put some things together on a picture. It's kind of small, but I'll just kind of walk you through what we got going on. So, there are a million things I could probably share with you tonight, but I just chose six of the most important things that's going on in our building right now. One of which, the first one, Mr. Brock has already talked about, we do have a new instructional coach, Ms. Sarah Beard. She was a former teacher of ours, and now she's working at Central Office, but her home is in our building, and we welcomed her back with open arms. We've worked well together with our administrative team. She is, right now, just today, she was part of a lot of our meetings today and gave some really insightful input. She met with Mr. Brock and Mr. Cornet, I do believe, was in that meeting as well, and she gave back today so excited from that meeting. But our teachers are really excited, especially our new teachers. She's gotten into some classrooms, modeled some lessons for our new teachers, and she also has co-taught with some of our new teachers, just kind of teaching them the ropes. She's been a really good resource for them, and she'll continue to be a resource for us all year. So, again, my staff did specifically say, please thank them tonight for the instructional coach position, because it's been, already been very beneficial. Number two there, we do have a new special education teacher that I did not introduce you to last time, that I should have. His name is Mr. Blake Hammons, he's teaching our sixth grade special ed classes, and he's doing a phenomenal job. I can't say enough about Mr. Hammons, but I left him off last time, so I told him that I would give him the whole 10 minutes that I get to speak, and he's like, "Please don't." No, actually, he said, "Is that enough?" And I said, "Nope, it's not." But he's doing a really good job. Number three, staff's really excited about iReady. That is a program that the Board of Education has purchased for us, and it has done, it's already given us a ton of focus and helped us to drive forward instruction for our students. So teachers are having data chats with students. I walked into a classroom the other day, and a student was walking out to go to the restroom, and the teacher said, "I'll talk to you when we come back in." And he said, "Oh, is that that data chat thing?" So when kids are talking about it, you know that, you know, it's sinking in, they're bringing it up in conversation, and we're getting them to think about their learning, which is going to be monumental, I believe, for our students. That data is also enriching our professional learning community conversations, and it's helping us monitor student learning. So, we dove in, we have dove, I think, into iReady, and we are, we really like it. So we want to thank you for that resource. Number four there, we did have our first spirit rally. Mr. Brock walked in on that, and it was really loud, and we had a lot of fun, and it was really good. We kicked off the school year, probably, what, three or four weeks in, we had our spirit rally. We celebrated a lot of things, we had some friendly competitions, and we talked about what it meant to have good behavior and what those expectations would be to kind of kick off the year. And that moves us on to number five. We have started a new behavior words program that kids are excited about. We, I'll let Mr. Flynn talk about it at some point, but it's something that he has titled "The Whistle Stop." He has converted one of our offices into kind of like a behavior rewards store, and he's, as you can imagine, you know, Mike Flynn, once he gets hold of something, it is decorated to the kilt, and it looks really good. So we will unveil that. I did not bring any pictures because I want it to be fully furnished and done before I share it with you, but he's really excited and kind of taking that over, and the kids are excited. They get to earn behavior points each week, and then they can save those up or cash those in for prizes once a month. We'll also have an event called the Monthly Mixer at that point. And then lastly, I know I've spoken a lot about our new teachers in the past, and I just want to brag on them, as well as our other faculty members. They are truly diving into a lot of professional growth opportunities. Our new teachers have worked with Southeast-South Central Co-op. All of them have been to a specific content training already this year, and they also have been to a behavior management training. And then they also are going to be a part of their new teacher cadre there at Southeast-South Central. So those new teachers are jumping in, but so are some of our veteran teachers in just really adapting their teaching to all of these new programs that we have going. But I'm really pleased with how hard they're working, I really am. Our building's falling apart, but our staff is not. We're really coming together. We're really coming together and really helping each other, and I can't say enough about them, so that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Napier.
For those that don't see who's talking, it's Jessica Mullins from Estill Springs. And we just have some snapshots here of some of the exciting things that have been going on at Estill Springs during the month of September. We were very excited this year about our perfect score on our safety walkthrough. Those are unannounced, and I was the first of the day. So I legitimately walked in the office to get a cup of coffee, and there stood Mr. Adams to do the walkthrough. So I didn't even have enough time to like, woo-woo-woo, down the hall or anything, like it was, we were ready to go. So that perfect score meant a lot to us because it was genuinely something that we had to just be prepared for. And I think, as a parent, that speaks volumes to parents. It doesn't matter how well that we're able to teach our students, if we're not able to keep them safe, then nothing matters. So we were very, very proud of that. As an attendance incentive, I somehow drew the short straw and was taped to the wall. That was the most interesting thing I've ever experienced, but it has traumatized some children. I still walk down the halls with kids who say, "I didn't like taping you to the wall." There were three students who tried to put a piece of tape on my mouth, and we are watching them closely. We did bust up our grade levels to spell out USA in red, white, and blue for Patriot Day. It's really hard. September 11th is something that's very scary for us as adults, but nonetheless for children. So we're very careful about how we roll out Patriot Day and what that day means, and the main focus that we have on that day is celebrating our respect and our appreciation for all of the heroes who keep us safe here in America. And that was a great day for us. We also learned about Constitution Day. Our teachers who are involved in the Charge Grant, I will never be able to speak highly enough of the Charge Grant. That grant puts their money where their mouth is, and they support these teachers in magnificent ways. I want to be part of the Charge Grant, I really do. The trips that they take and the professional learning that they're able to participate in just take our curriculum to another level. Here you see Ms. Campbell talking about Constitution Day with a group of her kindergarteners. Ms. Campbell is a very active member in the Charge Grant, and we're always appreciative of what they bring back to all classrooms. In the middle row here, our third grade had a culminating event, which was a tea party. They had, this came from some of their Amplify lessons, that's something that they look forward to. We have small group success going on, that's a picture with Ms. Amy. iReady has been a huge tool to promote student success. Growth is growth, whether it's on grade level or below grade level, growth is growth, and we are really celebrating victories for all students who are growing and making those gains. Our growth monitoring diagnostic, which is kind of a midpoint for us, is coming up here in a couple of weeks, we're really excited about that. But our students and our teachers are really taking advantage of the resources that we've also purchased with iReady, and we find out more every day. It's kind of like peeling an onion, like every day we kind of find a new layer. And what we really spend time celebrating is the fact that this is a resource that we're, we have the privilege of being tied to for three years. So all of the work that we're investing into it, and all of the time we're investing, we see this long-term advantage, knowing we're going to be even more prepared next week, we're going to be even more prepared the next week, and then we can't really imagine what we're going to be able to do next August, when we kind of have a big picture. So that has really lent to a lot of small group success, individual student success. Our fifth graders attended the Living Archaeology Weekend at the Red River Gorge. I don't know if any of you have ever been to that, but it is, it's wonderful. I knew you would have been there, Ms. Sheila. I think we went together at one point. It's a wonderful experience for our students to kind of step back in time, to really have an appreciation for the things that make our region unique, and that's always something that our students come back with all kinds of stories. You all know that as we do our best to maintain safety in our schools, it can sometimes have the lens of looking like we're closing the doors and shutting people out. That's never the vantage point we want any family to have. Every family can appreciate that our doors are not just opened for whoever wants to come in and out all day long, but we also want to maintain that sense of community and maintain, and start new traditions. Even though our buildings may feel closed at times, we're working outside of that box to create opportunities for our families to still participate during the school day in a way that is safe. This year, we hosted what will become an annual tradition for us, which was the Grandparents' Day Parade. I don't know that I've ever had that much fun at school. These grandparents and adopted grandparents, and those who stood in for grandparents, really just brought joy to every single student and staff member at Estill Springs. Veda Barnes wins the award for Best Grandparent out the window. We had a wonderful time. Every student left there with their bag full of candy and their heart full of love. It was exactly what we wanted, and so many grandparents mouthed on their way through, "This is wonderful, thank you, thank you, thank you." I mean, it was, it was a great day for us, and I don't know if anyone got to drive by and see that taking place, but it was a wonderful event. The last thing that I have on here, I really want to thank Mr. Brock, and I really want to thank the Estill County High School for all they did to really bring a sense of pride into our homecoming week last week. We had so much fun participating in all of their days, and their spirit days, their theme days. We had an Adam Sandler date. My kids, most of them don't know who Adam Sandler is, but their parents all were like, "We nailed it, like, we got it." We had a wonderful time participating, but the icing on the cake, legitimately the icing on the cake was tailgating with them on Friday night, an hour parade into the football game. We threw that out there for our staff, you know, this is something that we're wanting to start as a new tradition. We had about 40 people show up and had an absolute ball. So I see new traditions forming and things that I'm excited about. Thank you, Mr. Brock, thank you, High School, for allowing us to participate in that, but it's been a really, really good month at Estill Springs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mullins. Next, I think we have our Estill County High School.
I'm not sure that I actually need this for the computer and all of that. I'm going to first thank the elementary schools, the middle school, the community, the board. We had an amazing homecoming week. It gives me cold chills to think about it, but our kids saw the entire town painted blue. They saw everybody join the engineer walk. They seen the elementary kids dressing up on homecoming days. They thought it was hilarious that these little kids were dressing up as Adam Sandler. The Barbie pictures, some of these kids went way above and beyond. It was amazing.
Our school was flooded in pink.
Yes, our school was flooded in pink. The kids absolutely had a blast. And then Friday, we topped it off with probably one of the biggest pep rallies we have ever had. I think some of our staff members are still sore from the cheerleading routine that we performed, which was a big hit to the students. But thank you to everybody that was involved in that. That really helped our kids, it brought a sense of pride into them. It didn't go unnoticed, know that. These kids are very, very thankful for everything that you all have done, and for everything that the community has done. I'm not going to read all of these student accomplishments, or we would be here till midnight, because our kids are doing some amazing things. We have, I do want to just recognize Maddie Jo Benton real quick. She has had a phenomenal senior year on the golf team. I think she has pretty much brought home some type of championship in every single match that she has played in this summer and this fall. And we want to wish her the best of luck. I know golf season is getting ready to finish up. She has a bright future ahead of her. She's committed to EKU to play golf, so she's really representing Estill County very, very well. Our marching engineers, I can't even explain how great they're doing, and if you have not seen their performance, you need to come out Friday night and watch at the football game their performance, which is next Friday, because we have an away game this Friday. On their next performance out of town or even in Estill County, I would encourage you to go watch the marching band. They are phenomenal. Mr. Bowles and his team of parent volunteers and everybody that is a part of that, please go out and watch that. I don't know how Mr. Bowles does it, I want him to teach me his ways, but he gets about 100 volunteers to help him with the marching band. So I'm going to pick his brain and see how he does it. Again, our kids are doing great things. We invite you all out to our building anytime. So I'm going to let Ms. Barnett, oh, the art, I almost forgot. I found out today, our art students, we didn't put it on the flyer, because I just found out, they had been picked to create and paint a snowplow. And that snowplow is now going to be delivered, hopefully, within the next little bit to our school, and they will be working on it, and you will get to see the progress of their artwork, and then we will present the final product to you all whenever that is finished. But we are really excited. They got picked, and they are ecstatic, so we are happy for them.
So you can see on there all the stuff that happened during homecoming week, because there were a million things going on. We are running everywhere and doing everything. Our parade was a huge hit because we did the big loop to go back through, and I think everybody loved that, actually. everybody loved that, actually. So, that was a great idea by people that passed it down. We got to crown our queen, Ms. Hannah Hall, and our king at the dance, Mr. DeJuan Stevens. So, that was really awesome, too, that we got to do both of those this week, this past week. So, really honestly, that was our September, and it was awesome, the amount of fun that our students had with it all. Down at the bottom, you can see that we have our curriculum corner. Do you want to talk about the community involvement, or did you find already? Okay. We, some of the things that are going on right now in the, in the moment are our progress monitoring that we do with iXL. We are still working with our teachers and figuring it out almost as we go along, too, with our iXL, and making sure that we are getting it exactly the way we want it. And we're also just figured out that we are going to, my watch is also figuring that out with me, that we are going to actually be working with Mr. White and give the ACT, and he is going to come in and help us look at all the data, especially with the math part. But we're going to do it with all the different areas. But we're going to look at the math part with him, and he's going to help us break down all the pieces and go through, and he's going to work with some specific students and work with them. So, we are really excited about that part and work with our teachers and work with us, too, so that we can learn how to help our students with ACT. So, then, we are getting our Savis or Savas, however you want to pronounce it, materials. We are working right now. We got our ELA and our math. So, we have our my perspectives and envision, and we are getting that in, and we are getting our teachers trained. We are right now in the process of scheduling those PDs so that we can get our teachers trained and ready to use all that material. And then we have been having our coaching meetings with our teachers individually, with our teachers and administrators, and Ms. Tanya Miller, who we love having in our building, which is our district instructional coach. And our teachers have formed a great relationship with her, and she just has come in, and it's like she's at home with us. It is really great. She's like, she's been there forever, and we love her. So, nobody's allowed to steal her back. So, that's what we said. So, anyway, and teachers are reaching out to her pretty much on their own almost now, and it's really awesome that it's happened that quickly in our building. So, you can also see there's a bunch of upcoming events that are happening that we kind of wanted to put in there that are, and as a matter of fact, tonight, we were having our college panel night at the high school, where we have a bunch of college panel there with Ms. White and our gear-up team. So, if you all have any further questions about anything, feel free to ask.
I'd like to add, you were talking about band on September 30th.
Yes.
Band will have their second band competition. And if you've not just seen our band, but you've never been to a band competition, especially to see the larger bands, you'll just be amazed. I mean, it's.
I was blown away last year.
All of these bands.
Yeah.
September 30th.
I was blown away last year by it, and I came just to watch our band, because I love watching our band. And I thought, "I'm going to go early and watch everybody," and it was, I was blown away. So, and now Meredith is going to be a butterfly for Halloween because she has to match the band. So, it's great.
It is an all-day event, from May 8th to the morning through February, the next morning. So, you've got plenty of time to come out and watch.
Who's in?
Oh. Okay. Next, we have West Urban Elementary. We have Ms. Charlotte Arvin to tell us what's going on at West Urban.
Well, I'm going to start just by describing our MTSS system and what we're doing at each tier. Tier one is that big focus of what's happening in the day-to-day instruction. And to continue to grow in our instruction, we've worked with KDE. They have come in and continued to facilitate clarity with the social studies standards. So, we finished four weeks of work on that, and we've had a lot of fun discussions. Mr. Brock had to come in and referee one of the meetings, and he thinks I'm a little We have continued to work with our PLC doc, with our process. We do have a lot of data this year. We have the iReady data. We have unit data that we are working to clarify exactly what each question is trying to get to, so that we can determine whether or not our instruction is rigorous. And we continue to work on revisions to our curriculum documents. So, it's fantastic to get back into that swing of things, because we have the right data aligned and going for us. Ms. Hall and I have gone, Ms. Hall, going back to, we did. Ms. Young and I have been visiting classrooms. We've done our continuous classroom improvement walkthroughs, and we have identified some concerns and areas of celebration. So, we've celebrated those great things, and we're making some adjustments, so that we're moving up to a solid Level 2 at implementation in all classrooms. And I think that's exciting, because some of those teachers have really only completed Level 1 training. So, they really are doing good things. For our tier two, our teachers have been excited about the iReady data and the fact that they can get right in there and get to instructional groups. So, our students are getting more small group instruction, so that we can meet needs where they are and help them continue to grow. They are using the My Path as well, and they really enjoy using that. It is, it's a, it's a fun program in addition to being meaningful. Tier three, we have had our first family meetings for Senate Bill 9 and the reading plans that are required for all students in K through 3. And we had, the folks that came were very engaged and really wanted to know how they could support their students and what reading looked like. And that is one of the first time we've had those really deep discussions with us. We haven't worked with littles. So, we have really talked about the pillars of reading and what that looks like. Phonemic awareness is not a word most folks talk about, but it is really, it can be fun. So, we've had those meetings and gotten started. As far as monitoring our school and the systems in place, our goal teams had really good meetings, very deep discussions just last week, and they finished their needs assessment so that we can draft our CSIP that will be delivered to you soon. We have celebrated School Preparedness Month with our First Responder Breakfast and Walk Through the Building. That was followed up by the same day that, I think, Marshall Adams, did he visit all schools the same day? He hasn't visited you all? Visited you all? So, he came and visited us and was a fantastic visit. We were happy that we were in compliance in all areas and even got some high marks on different things that Mr. Willis had helped us with, with the summer field trips, and the fact that we had planned to have a school nurse with us on those trips, and the AED machine, someone that was also CPR certified. That's thanks to the board and you all having the materials we need and the people in place to do that. So, that was nice. The first responders were really excited when they ran, when they got down to that lower hall, and every student in that building was lined in that hallway and cheering them on. You would not believe the heat in that building with all those kids in one place. The fun events that we've had, I can't talk enough about homecoming either. We had a ball decorating, making signs, all the fun things. I think that it was definitely a big community builder. Our staff loved, I think it was just that they loved being a part of a bigger, a bigger group. We truly were Estill that week. We have had monthly celebrations. We've already had two for PBIS Rewards. The kids are having a ball with those. We had our first color run event with third grade. That was kind of our first big fundraiser event, which is also fun. I thought about that. How many places do you really have fundraisers that are fun? And you get to add to what's going on in the school through a fundraiser, but that's really what happens. We had our first school-wide assembly, and the assembly, we practiced getting into an assembly, because we really have been out of practice the last few years. So, we practiced loading into the gym, unloading out of the gym, and then the fun stuff in the middle, which was also meaningful, because we were working on our bullying prevention program and trying to help kids understand the definition of bullying. We had a, I think that's my cue, my time is up. The High Attendance Day, we had a great day, and it is, this is an unofficial. I think West Urban had the high attendance for the, for the district that day, but it's unofficial, and Mr. Norton isn't here to confirm. But the kids are really looking forward to sliming me. I'm not sure how we're going to get slime in all of their hands so they can put it on me, but we're going to figure that out somehow. And I think the High Attendance Day was a big celebration for us, because our entire second grade was there, every single student in that grade. That was phenomenal. So, we've had lots of fun things going on, but also lots of good work. So, thank you all for all your ongoing support.
Thank you.
Ms. Arvin, Mr. Brock, do you have any further comments to follow up with the principal's report? Oh, I forgot, you already presented. I forgot.
Do you have any?
Yeah. Do you have anything else?
I don't think I do have anything else. I kind of share everything that's happened so far. Well, we had things like the safety walkthrough, you know, paint on that. That's pretty much it, I think. Any questions?
I just wanted to give you an opportunity in case something else come across your mind.
We're still enrolling, and we're still losing them, if they, parents can't stand us, we're going to cry, as we've been. And Ms. Hall and her staff, just some of the work they've been doing, like some of our kids who have never, probably haven't been out with them, is incredible. And just seeing some of the changes from a couple weeks ago to now is really incredible. If you ever have a chance to go, we see, they, you're different a lot, and we've got kids that are moving on. You are, I mean, that's really neat, honestly.
It's really good.
And, I'm about to mention the fact that the staff, and I had it on my list, the staff was appreciative of being invited to the Kentucky Association, the school board meeting that was here in Estill. And thank you, Dawn, for your, for your work in that, and getting our, our county that opportunity.
It's just been a good month. The homecoming, I didn't want to steal their thunder. The engineering walk was phenomenal. I thought that if we got 50 people, it would be great. We probably had closer to 150 people. So, it was awesome. So, next year, homecoming, engineering walk, everybody come walk with us.
Shorten the distance and I'll think of it.
I did shorten the distance. I originally wanted to walk from central office. So, then I said Estill Springs, and they were like, "Mr. Brock." I said, "Okay."
I told Ms. How come maybe the ATC down, something like that. She says, "I'm going for that."
Well, we could come around underneath the, the Pedway and then back in front of the school. I want to march everybody into the field next year.
We will come up with a better plan next year, because we need to be more prepared.
Listen, it was awesome for the first one. It was amazing. Thank you all.
So, those are exciting things that are going on in our district. And so, do we have anything from our board members?
I just thought it was an awesome week. I think everybody took Paint the Town Blue to another, to another level, and I love seeing our community come together like that. It's not West Urban Wildcats. It's not, it's not Estill Springs Bulldogs. It's not Patriot. They're all engineers, and I, and I, and I think that just, I don't know, makes me proud, proud.
For sure.
Like proud Papa or something. I don't know.
Ms. Arvin kind of touched a little bit on it, but we were able to host the Kentucky State Board Meeting Association here, and our district represents the upper-middle Kentucky River region. So, we had guests here from Hazard, Brethick County, Wolf County, Lee County, Ausley County, and of course, here in Estill County. This was the first time we've ever hosted a KSBA meeting, and so, it was quite an undertaking. We weren't sure what we were getting into, but we certainly want to give a shout-out to all the people that helped make that possible. West Urban showed up big. I think this was our first time to do it, so we'll know more next year when we do it again. Andrea Williams was instrumental in helping me get everything together, Angie Howe, Ms. Rebecca, our administrative secretary, and then the board showed up so we could decorate and pull it all together. Mr. Brock was there cheering us on, and.
I'm not a decorator.
We had students from FCC LA, from our ROTC program. We had FFA students to help park and give directions. We had a lot of student participation.
For vans.
Our band performed. They had their jazz band there, and everyone was just, took their breath away. It was just a really beautiful evening, and Mr. Brock heard some really good comments and feedback.
Yeah, they, the representatives, there was three different people came up to me and said, "This is the best one we've ever been to." My response was, "It's really great, but wait till next year, when we know what we're doing. It'll be even better."
So, thanks to everyone that helped participate in that. And West Urban made these really, really cool cookies that they gave to everyone, and they had KSBA, and they had engineers on them in Estill County, and they were the cutest things ever. So, shout-out to West Urban for all of that, but thank you all very much for that. Homecoming, wow. I mean, I had so much fun, and I did do the engineer walk.
I know, I walked with you.
And I made it, and Ms. Andrea walked with me, and Ms. Jessica walked with me, and we made it, and we weren't too bad out of breath.
Not too bad.
So, I guess, Mr. Simpson, do we have any public comments? Okay. If nothing further, I'd like to call for an adjournment. Ms. Sheila Samuels and Ms. Tammy Hardy, so this meeting is officially adjourned.